Good morning. If my gentlemen are ready this morning, we will get started. My name is Connie Malier. I'm the Chair of the Audit Committee this morning. And let's start by showing the Lord some respect. You'll bow your heads with me, please. Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful spring day and thank you for the blessings we have, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Help us as we make decisions this morning that affect our neighbors and the citizens of this county. Some of these decisions are not easy, but please guide us and be sure our actions are based on truth and fairness. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Thank you. I see that we have a quorum for the committee this morning. We have the minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have?
So move. Move to accept the minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. The agenda that's in front of you. Gentlemen, do we have any changes to that?
No changes, ma'am, sir.
We need a second.
You didn't get a second or a vote on the minutes.
Patrice waved at me.
He just seconded the minutes. You gotta, we gotta vote to accept the minutes.
Oh, do we vote to accept?
I made the motion.
Are we on the committee? We're the committee with me. We're all on the audit committee. I'm sorry. Sorry. A little different this morning. So we have a motion and a second. Gentlemen, please raise your right hand if you accept. I apologize. I'm getting on the game this morning. Now, let's look forward to, that was for the minutes. Now for the agenda.
The agenda's set.
The agenda is set. Let's move forward with this. Let's see.
We have some draft reports and we'll call on our internal auditors. Connor, Mr. Evans, to present those.
Welcome to the circus this morning. I apologize.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. We're gonna double team you this morning because we have five reports. We told we had an, we were told we had an hour and a half to get through this, so. No, I'm sorry.
He works by the hour.
Hour forty-five. We got nowhere to go.
Let's first look at the library system report. You should have in your folder. And I will direct your attention to page three. And you will notice that in all of the areas that we looked at, had no findings or no exceptions. My takeaway from this report would be mostly involving the grant process. So if you'll turn back to, let's see what page that's on. That is on page seven. There are, you know, three types of grant funds available. There's funding, salary positions, system services grant, and then materials grant. And we investigated all of those grants, the approval of those grants, the allocation of those grants, and found no exceptions to that. So I think, takeaway, you don't have a lot of cash coming into the library in form, in the form of people coming into the library. Most of the money that's coming in is through those grant programs. So that's what we focused on. We found no exceptions there. We did visit all three sites, Columbia County, and monitored their cash reporting process. So. Next to lodging. Any questions about library?
So we have completed and presented for your review one of our hotel lodging reports. If you look on page four, you can see the results begin there. As we usually do, we took a look at gross sales per the hotel's internal reporting, per their excess tax return that they prepare for the county, and per the state and use tax return that they provide to the state. And we noticed various small differences between those reports, often explained by food and beverage sales, food and beverage sales that are subject to sales tax when the excess tax is not applied to that. You will notice that one of the four hotels that we looked at did not provide their internal reports. That was why we have actually held this report back for a while while we tried to get more cooperation there. But we finally decided to go ahead and present this report. And so we simply noted that that one hotel did not provide their internal reports.
John, do we have a way to compel them to participate?
I believe we sent a letter. We've sent a letter in the past. This happens upon occasion. In general, I think we get good response from the hotels. But every now and again, we have a report where one of them doesn't cooperate. But...
That would help to have a look.
So is this from the same owner or group, or is, you say you have issues in the past?
There was one, the last report. I can't recall whether it was from the same.
It was not the same one. It was not the same one. Yes, it was not the same one. And this one has cooperated before.
Is it just a, is it just no response as opposed to a belligerent response?
Not a belligerent response. No response or saying to follow up and not doing it. I actually will try to get more involved next time and see if I can find out what the actual cause is. I apologize. Yeah, pollen's getting in my throat. But not a belligerent response.
How, Mr. Driver, how would we, thank you very much.
Problem solved.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So we will work harder to get a hundred percent response in the future. And we'll try to find ways to make that work. But we did find that all the tax forms were submitted on time, the correct tax form was used. And in general, while we noticed very small differences on different numbers reported, and that it's all in a matrix form on your report, but we did notice that in general, the hotels are submitting their 5% excess tax.
And we will continue to follow up with hotels. We're always trying to cycle through and have some newer hotels. Been looking at one in particular that has a higher level of exempt sales than some of the others. So we're...
I'd like to just roll right into another hotel motel report if that's...
But that seems to be the one we always stub our toe on, so I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, we were slow bringing this one to you, which is one, another reason why I want to go right back into it and look at a few more hotels and keep that ongoing as we try to make sure that the correct amount of excess tax is collected.
And it seems like the differences were explainable as food and beverage type things, and none of them were material, the differences in the report.
Generally, that's... We were looking, one, are they using the correct form? Maybe a couple of years ago, we had to change the form quite, and they were all using the same form, all hotels. Trying to make sure they're matching it with the state report and with their internal records. It's the case we had where the lack of cooperation was actually looking at their ledgers to see, getting the information for the follow-up on that hotel.
Is there any other items on here that we should be concerned about?
Not in this report. I think the focus going forward, a clear definition, because there is a difference between the county exemption.
And also, interesting, Comfort Inn has zero exempt sales for the three months. Yeah. So this is just to make consistency in what I suspect, this is to make consistency in what individual hotels are considering. So some further areas for us to look into there.
We're working on it.
Who could provide some sort of training? And they make a train queue on what, how, what's exempt, what's, just saying. But how would we get that? I think they have a group pitching in front of them.
They have like a breakfast group or a lunch group.
Yeah, maybe a presentation to them.
Sure.
It's fairly straightforward in the Georgia code. But there is some question about federal, federal employees, whether it's paid direct or otherwise. So dig in a little deeper on that. And it never really came to light until our hotel exempt sales shot way out. Have a question. You just follow the lead. We're headed.
Thank you.
Any questions about the hotel motel lodging tax?
No, sir. Fire services?
Okay, fire services. This one's fairly straightforward. Page three is the, you'll see the notes there. There was only one instance we noted where they had not gotten the proper three bids on something that was over $2,000. But they explained that many times, they try to get three and not three bidders. And when they do that, they normally document that they attempted, but they were unable to get three bidders. This, they explained that they were just not able to get one, and they failed to record the fact that no one else bid. You know, the takeaway, I think, for the fire department are risk to public exposure. They don't take in a lot of money. They actually require checks for anything that they, selling signs or limited funds that they bring in. Their probably biggest exposure to public scrutiny would be their collection. I think it happens every May, several days. That's all cash.
Food drive?
Yeah. But we looked at their policies and procedures of how they either have at least two on-site. Every hour, there's someone coming around collecting that, those funds. There are four counters that go back to the station. Multiple people are verifying the number. There's, if it's over a weekend, they're putting it in a safe so that it's not affected to appropriation. So we feel comfortable that the policies and procedures they have set up for that. It is a fund drive for charity. And so paper over funds on a charity drive. And I think they've put good policies and procedures in place and they're following them.
None. All right. Next.
All right. So we're sending today a report concerning internal controls surrounding the purchase cards. This is something that we look at in every department, every department audit. But we looked at a big picture over a larger period of time and did some analysis. And we're happy to report that we had some good results. Took a list of all the purchase card transactions made over a period of time and analyzed them to look for this thing that we've seen in the past, which is multiple transactions posted on the same day to avoid the $2,000 threshold. So we looked at 11,235 days with multiple cardholders. And we found first 152 instances to investigate, then we narrowed it down statistically. And at the end of the day, found only one instance where there was a purchase, there was, well, two purchases back to back, which exceeded $2,000 and didn't have three to five quotes. Thus this with the management of that department. And their explanation is on page six of this report. And they explained that it was not an intentional split, but that they purchased several items from one supplier, didn't have enough, went to another supplier. That response is there for you.
Basically, it bought all the soccer balls that Academy Sports had and had to go somewhere else.
Yes. Yeah, they bought everything Academy Sports had, then moved on to the internet. So that's in the report for your review. Couple other statistical things. Well, first, let's talk about internal controls or procedures. We looked at purchase card issuance and cancellation. So purchase cards are issued to employees at the request of division directors. Looked over those procedures. We selected several cardholders and made sure they had a cardholder agreement signed on file. We also looked at terminated employees. So when an employee is separated from the county, the Human Resources Department forwards that information to the procurement department, which then both cancels the card and also verifies that there have been no purchases, improper purchases on that card. We selected several separated employees and found no issues with that either. And then a couple of interesting stats. Did notice that in general, average transaction is about $280, which is only about 3% of the average credit limit. That only about 1% of the time did the transactions exceed 50% of the credit limit. So in other words, people are not running up the cards. So some interesting information there. Any questions about process?
I was curious. How many purchase cards do we have out there?
Oh, gosh. I probably, hadn't asked me, I probably could tell you. That's a knowable number, but it's a lot. Not an inordinate amount, but it's just...
Around 400 or so.
Okay. Well, this is a problem that a lot of other counties have with trying to control the cards. And they have too many out there. They get misused. But, you know, with the way our finance department, our procurement department handles it, and the way our auditors come back and check this, this program's been a really good program for us. They're paying us rebates. It's easier to pay that than it is to have several people on staff, you know, that we would need to be able to cut the checks, do all the purchases that we would need to do. So our finance department remains small. It's just been a really good program for us. And to have them come in and look at it overall and find that it's in such good shape is refreshing because it works really well.
My observation was that we're very well behaved in this regard.
Our concern was, what do you have to do? Get one. How do you use it? And then what happens if you leave, you know?
And those are pretty tight.
There's a good exit strategy. Exit.
Yeah. I was pleased to see that there are specific internal controls in place around the separation of former employees. So we saw no large-scale issues there. And again, all of the procurement thresholds and rules all apply to the purchase cards. While it's administratively more simple than writing checks, it doesn't get around any of the control surrounding purchases. And so that's why we look for that also.
Gentlemen, any other questions regarding purchase cards? Recreation internal.
All right. So the recreation department, a little larger report than some of the others, just more things to go through. Also, a very good result. On page four, there's a brief discussion about how we had difficulty for technical reasons in tracing individual transactions to the general ledger. You might wonder what that means, kind of like accountant speak. But typically, when you look through our reports, we trace individual receipts of funds all the way back to the general ledger. In this case, there's an interfacing, which makes it difficult to do that. So we did alternative procedures to get comfortable that everything was being captured in the general ledger by looking at it on a big-picture level. And then we contacted Leanne and asked her also if she was familiar with this matter and if she was comfortable that the total amount of revenue is getting in the general ledger. So it's a brief discussion on page four. Please let me know if you have any questions about that. But it didn't cause us much harm.
In essence, there is a system used in the rec department for scheduling and those doesn't offer. Those two software systems on an individual transaction basis become somewhat difficult. On a month-to-month or year-to-year, reconcile that. Not individually. And finance is comfortable with that.
Didn't we have some sort of conversation that we were looking at something that they could?
Talk to?
Sure.
Something that munis would be able to talk to, didn't? I thought we had a discussion that we were looking into another.
It does talk. But whenever you're taking data from one system to, not necessarily trackable way of doing it. There's, I can understand why there was some confusion. But the rec one is necessary for the capability on his team. Does feed into, not as clean.
But we have overcome those challenges and we have found a way to reconcile them so that we know that the numbers are good. But individually, it may be a little difficult to track through the whole process.
Okay. But we don't see any foreseeable change in those systems, or we're comfortable with what we got. Okay.
The rec one system provides a lot of sort of customer-facing benefits.
Right.
And so this little bit of complication on the back end.
Small price to pay.
Yep, exactly.
All right.
So, but I mention that because we just threw out the report. If you re-threw out the rest of the report, where we normally would say, we traced that transaction back to the GL, then we'll say, you know, we didn't quite get there. But we feel good about the actions overall. So we looked at the county gym. First of all, I didn't know that the county had a gym. And I might need to cancel my subscription over at Evans Fitness. But we looked at active gym memberships. We looked at inactive memberships. We looked at the daily pass fee and found no issues with any of those various ways that folks pay to join the gym or to go to the gym. Looked at rental contracts. We looked at the Rangers cabin rental. Looks like the park ranger's paying his cabin rental. We looked at campsites, things at Wildwood Park. We looked at all the transactions that are out there for day use or renting different types of campsites. Found no issues there. We looked at the youth and adult registration over at Patriots Park, the softball registrations and stuff. A lot of this stuff goes through rec one and found no issues, any of that. Also, there's this organization, the National Alliance of Youth Sports, where coaches have to have a little training, have a background check. We looked at all of those procedures. Had no issues there. We also looked at purchase requisitions, purchase cards, and time sheets. Found no exceptions. So.
Lot to look at in the rec department. Lot going on. Rec one system, their life a lot easier.
Yeah. So there's a lot of, a lot of activity there. It's something that's a real benefit to our citizens. A lot going on, but we really found no issues at all. Any questions about recreation?
None. Any questions about any other items in the report? Being none, do we need a motion? I apologize. You accepted. We're gonna accept this as information, and we appreciate it. I see that our upcoming internal audits will be on Tax Commissioner, Magistrate Court, Probate Court, Juvenile Court, and Board of Elections.
Yes.
See you back in a few months.
These are due on the rotations. That's the ones that we plan to schedule next.
I mean, if I can, if I can just throw something in here. With the change in the voting operations, the Board of Elections is right in the middle of an election. They'll be, they'll be doing elections all year long. We may need to swap something out from Board of Elections and do it next year.
Yeah. I, that's a great idea. And I was concerned about the same thing. I definitely don't want to try to send my staff people in there where there's so much going on. So I wanted to be strategic about it. Definitely get past this vote on the 24th. But what I was hoping to do is maybe capture some of that activity with the new voting machines and stuff. Just even if we do the work after November, after that activity, because that's probably more activity than the, than the Board of Elections normally.
It's a lot. And we're really going through a lot. We'll discuss that offline. We'll figure that out. But certainly move forward with the first four on that, on that list. And then we'll discuss that fifth one.
Yeah. That makes a lot of sense. I also didn't want to rush into Board of Elections with so much going on.
Y'all got any doctoral counting majors that want a thesis they could work on?
On the new voting system?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Want to audit that?
Pass on that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on our agenda. I have external auditing services.
Yes. We issued a request for proposals for external auditing services. We did receive two proposals, one from Cherry Beckett and the other from Malden and Jenkins. After a review and evaluation of these proposals, staff is recommending awarding the services to the highest-ranked firm, which is Cherry Beckett. And this would be for a one-year term beginning July 1st, 2020, ending June 30th, 2021, for, with an additional four one-year terms. Renew it.
We're currently with?
Yes.
And we look at this officially every four years? Is that the process?
Usually every five years. But last year, it sort of slipped, you know, under the radar. And I asked for an extension, a six-year extension, and so we could do it this year.
Okay. This year, and then four possible add-ons?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the total on that, Leanne?
I want to say for the first year, it was sixty, it was $58,000 for the regular audit, and then an additional amount for the Board of Health. And I want to say it was around 65 for the first year, which is basically what we're paying now. Malden and Jenkins was in the 70s.
I saw a number that was super high on, and through all this, and that's why I was trying.
There were some additional services that they quoted prices on that were outside of the scope of just the traditional audit. And you may have been seeing a total with all of that in it.
Hundred, 120 or something.
That was probably with the other services added in. But just for the audit itself, it was 58 and maybe another 10 for the Board of Health, something like that.
Do we need a motion?
Move that.
Either way, you can do it.
Make a motion to move to that agenda.
Second.
Excellent. Raise your right hand. Agreement. Thank you, gentlemen.
So moves.
Are there any other items that we need to discuss today? Any public comment? Missioners, do you have any comments? Thank you. We have nothing for executive session. So this meeting is adjourned, and we will come back together in, let's say, five minutes for our next committee meeting. Thank you.
What do we got? Management next?
Do a little bit of the next one.
Management next.
You warming up?
I just...
You warming up?
I had in my mind that... Got quiet, so I'm going to take that opportunity, go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the committee meeting for management and internal services. We have already prayed and pledged and having a quorum, even though Chairman Duncan is not with us this morning, Commissioner Richardson and I constitute a quorum. We have copy of the minutes from the previous meeting. Commissioner?
Make a motion to approve.
So moved, approval of the agenda, do we have any changes to this agenda?
Not to my knowledge, ma'am, Chair.
Thank you. Do we, apologies, do we have to vote in committee to accept the agenda? We don't vote on that, okay.
If you want to, you can.
I don't think that's necessary, just making sure, didn't want to miss anything. Having no presentations and nothing on the consent agenda, I want to move directly to debate items. The first item is Noah Bona report.
Yes, ma'am, we'll call on our tax commissioner, Mr. Bridges, to come submit this report. Is there any questions? Wayne, unless you want me to give anything on it, you wanna... It is what it is.
All that stuff, basically, we're recommending that we, we write off, basically, back in good old accounting terms, just write off these old and uncollectible tax counts, total of fifteen thousand some odd dollars, most of that is personal property. In fact, these are businesses that have closed, we can't find them.
Mobile homes, boats.
Can't find the people, I mean, it's, and we continue to clean this up on the book, not, not dollar-wise, but a bunch of little, not worth going after.
Very good.
Basically.
We move to the, on the consent agenda or does that have to go to debate since this money?
It could, it could go to consent.
I don't think we have any questions, Wayne, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I make a motion to move to consent.
So moved. Thank you. Next, Mr. Johnson, you have some reports for us.
The first item that we have is an appointment for Janet Wheatley to serve on the library board of trustees for the, for the library board. This is Commissioner Galius' appointment, staff recommends approval.
Make a motion to move to consent.
So moved, next.
Next item we have is a fourth amendment to the Declaration of Covenants, conditions, easement, restrictions for Marshall Square. This has been an, an issue that has been ongoing between us and the folks over at Marshall Square, changing the covenants and some of the conditions over there. Our, the county attorney's been working closely with their attorney, we've been back and forth on some of the amendments. Chris, if you want to add anything about these amendments, is there anything in particular?
Are there multiple sets of covenants covering the plaza area? Can you explain that just a little bit?
Can, can I ask, were these covenants totally the Marshall's and then they did whatever and then we came in, we adopted theirs or we wrote a new set?
There's layers, there's not just one set, there's layers. And this one might apply to these folks in this area and another one applies to... Okay, so first let's tackle I-1, B-2, Fourth Amendment to Declaration of Covenants and let's talk about that one first.
So this, this issue is basically, it has to do primarily with water collection. I believe they may have changed their, their name here, but the biggest issue has to do with stormwater runoff and the use of the, the large detention pond that's over there. Again, we're, we're comfortable with the change, the, all of these covenants are things that, that the county either initiated or wanted to initiate. So we're comfortable with this one, but the first one that you're dealing with basically deals with the voting rights and deals with the runoff, stormwater runoff.
And we feel comfortable the other parties will agree or?
Their, their lawyers sent it over to us, so I, I think they've already approved it essentially, haven't they, Chris? Yeah, so their, their lawyers sent it over to us and then we sent back our revisions, they agreed to our revisions and now that's what you have before you.
And the negotiations are pretty much done this week?
Yes. Yep. The first one deals with, again, stormwater primarily.
I make a motion to move to consent.
So moved, let's tackle the First Amendment to Declaration, I-1, B-3.
This one, this one has to do with the settlement that we had with the Marshalls as a result of the lawsuit where we purchased the property and there were certain conditions that were put on the county. And again, the, the primary issue here was the, the whole thing about both of us having to consent to residential being over there. There was some discussion about whether that should be left in there, removed, or whether it should be conditional on the owner that's currently bought over there. It was our position that the board of commissioners has the ability to control whether or not residential goes over there regardless of it being in some sort of covenant, you can do that through zoning. So there's no reason to have this covenant in place and certainly no reason to have us and a, and a third party who's essentially going to be out of the entire process once they sell out. There's no reason to have them having an involvement in, into what goes over there when the commission can handle that themselves. This, this is the First Amendment to that covenant. Chris, anything else on that one? Right.
And this has been negotiated with the Marshall Square LLC already, they've agreed?
Yes, ma'am. The three major property owners over there have all agreed to that.
Come into agreement.
And, and so basically, the county will have the say because they...
Well, essentially what's gonna happen is...
After they sell off their share.
Right, so, so the covenants that, that apply here, if there's something that needs to be changed, this one's gonna change the way in which we change the covenants, anything that happens over there. Right, but, but that's only, that, but it, but it takes away all the other restrictions that were in place. There, there's no need to talk about residential over there anymore or anything like that. Again, that goes back to the county zoning and your ability to do that. We just didn't feel like there needed to be a third-party ability to control any sort of zoning over there, that needs to be left to the board of commissioners, that's why we took it out completely.
I make a motion to move to consent.
So moved, thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
This next item is for a three-year renewal of the current IPAS MOA with FEMA and the IPAS equipment that we currently have from FEMA's 911, just, or continued.
Any cost associated with this?
I make a motion to move to consent.
So moved. Next, juvenile court, independent contract agreement.
Yes, this is a new agreement for attorney guardian ad litem services. This is a replacement, it's not an addition to their, to their contracts and it will be for fifteen hundred per month, which will be for six thousand dollars for the remainder of this fiscal year.
Move to consent.
So moved, unmanned aerial system policy.
First of five agenda items, so bear with me this morning.
Thank you.
The unmanned aerial system policy, one of those in order to coordinate the activities that we've seen coming up in the county in terms of drones and rather than call them UAS or unmanned aerial system, drones for purposes of this discussion, we have several departments that are using drones right now. GIS is using drones, A is using drones, Stormwater, Water Utility, Fire Rescue. So what we've had is several different departments kind of rising with different policies and procedures, practices and how they use them. What we want to do is create up this policy, call that under one roof, essentially make it, we're adopting FAA standard. Reason for that is that drones used to really be wild west and what the FAA has done, starting to put more regulations on it, licenses, pilot in command, have observers and that. And in order to make sure that the county is protected and covered in those areas, establish this, being the coordinator, to make sure everybody's in agreement and subject to a policy on how we're going to do it. This has not just been something done by GIS, but they've worked with other departments as well, including EMA and Fire Rescue to come up with this, so it's been a team effort.
How many licensed pilots do we have?
We have, I think, three?
I thought it was four, but it may be three, three or four.
Got four.
And they're across different departments?
Correct.
So it won't be one group doing the work for each department, the, that department will have a...
It, it, that's correct.
... whatever it is.
Correct, but whenever they fly a mission, they'll have the same standards of documentation or that, you know, if, if a citizen calls and says, well, there was a drone over my property, we'll be able to refer back and say that, who it belonged to or if it was even ours.
Fire and sheriff's department are excluded?
Fire, Fire Rescue and the sheriff, they can opt in if they want to, there is a public safety exclusion so that they don't have to get a Part 107 license in order to fly. Obviously, we're encouraging them to do that, to make sure that everybody's on the same page, but Fire Rescue and Sheriff have both been leaders in this area and very responsible in how they use their drone.
I just want to say, this is, this is one of many new policies that you've written and brought to us, you've only been here what, about a year?
Two and a half years, ma'am.
Has it been that long?
It has been that long.
Sorry, time flies. So you have been, you brought so many new policies and procedures to us and I think that's fantastic that you're looking at the big picture and trying to bring things together and tighten up loose ends, so thank you so much for that, because writing these, that's not a lot of fun, it's very technical and, and I appreciate your, your attention to detail on bringing these together.
It's not fun, but it's necessary and I couldn't do it without the backing of the team that I've got. They, I don't know if, if they, they just tolerate it or they're happy to have the policies, but I do have a great team.
Good, well, thank you to the team, oh, yeah, about there. Thank you.
So, so, just so I'm clear on this, there'll be multiple people that are certified for GIS, multiple people for Water Utility, multiple, or is it like one key guy that's the pilot and then there's co-pilots or?
Well, we want to get as many people certified as we can to make it, we're able to accomplish our mission. I can see a time where we maybe have two or three different, per department. Now, on the, the team that's going to meet on a regular basis, we'll have one, I'll call them a voting member, we don't want to have fifty people in the room, but we do want to have this team. Or if we need to update our documentation or our procedures, we'll have that group get together, work with the program coordinator in order, our new standard we're going to apply.
So moved, next.
Next item is some additional funding for the Scanning Services project with Scanning. If you remember back in last October, and actually it was approved in November, the commission approved an agreement between Columbia County and Scanning America in order to scan what we thought was about fifty to eighty thousand building plans. As it turns out, we had more, like two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand pages. The, the challenge there is that when we got the original agenda item approved, approved up to seventy thousand dollars worth of expense out of building funds. In order to get the additional scanning that we need done, according to Scanning America, it would be about ninety-one hundred dollars. I've also been working with building standards and I'm sure if you're familiar with their office, but they have a, a big square table in the middle of the room where they have a lot of other building plans that were not part of the original project. So in working with Paul Scarberry, worked out what we want to do is fund the remainder of the scanning project to get us all the way up to two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand and the additional plans that are in his office as well. So in order to accomplish that, we want to ask for fourteen thousand dollars worth of additional funds.
This creating a history, going back in scanning, how far back were those, were that electronic now?
We're gonna have building plans scanned from, I believe, the seventies, as old as we have them.
That's awesome, because I know we were looking for something one, one day and it was, it was all over the complex to get, I mean, we, we got there, but it was a lot to get. And so moving forward, we're scanning these ourselves or the company will be?
No, sir, the, the company is scanning.
Moving forward.
The company, they scan them and they'll, actually, they've already sent us two drives back with...
But moving forward, I think what Gary's asking, are we getting caught up with this but in order to stay caught up, because there's always something, we go, will we be scanning those ourselves or we'll continue to send them out?
Okay, we shouldn't have to scan them ourselves, what we'll do in the future is have a, have the submission done electronically, so they will send us electronic files which will be brought in the system that way. Now, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, Ms. Glenn, procurement still has a warehouse full of paper documents that no doubt they would like to scan, but as far as building plans, we'd have reached the conclusion of this project with...
So now when, when you're doing a job, you have to submit three sets of plans, it'll all be electronic moving forward, is that correct?
That's the intention.
Will everybody be presenting?
The intention is for those to all be submitted electronically and they'll circulate through an approval electronically, they'll be reviewed, programmed, and then all the notes made electronically as opposed to written with a written back, so it'll all be done. Sent back, so it'll all be done without it, hopefully no paper.
Do we have that kind of?
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, do we have that kind of project management software in place that, that our staff can do that electronically?
We're using two distinct packages to do that. Well, the intake will, will be happening through Munis, it has the ability to do that, create the ticket that'll handle the workflow. And then we have a package called Blue Bean, it's more or less a standard architectural design package, markups, and that will be submitted back into Munis for the final approval.
And so what, what date will all of the contractors and developers have to submit electronically and stop using paper?
I don't have an exact date for you, we're working on the approval process right now. We have, we've purchased iPlan Tables, which is a large screen with a computer attached, so that they can review right there in front of them, instead of on a small computer screen. Building Standards is already doing some review through iPlan Table, and the hope is that within the next, next one to two months, testing, and then I'm, and I hope and pray within three months that we'll be accepting plans electronically.
And what point will we demand they be electronic? Like, we will not accept any more paper?
Sure.
The reason I'm asking is because I'm thinking if we, if we continue to take it paper and electronic, we're still gonna have more paper, will we be back in six months where there's still another stack of paper we need to?
We're, we're really trying to move forward to we get them all electronically. We're, we're working with the development community to try to get that. We have a couple of people that are lagging along. We don't want to get to the point where we just absolutely just demand it, I, I would say, in the next six months, but at some point, we're gonna have to. I think we're gonna get everybody to come along agreeably.
Willingly.
I, I think so. I think, I think everybody'd be willing to do it, and, and we, we've worked well with that. If, if we have those couple of people, then we'll have individual meetings with them. What we didn't want to do is create a hard, fast deadline to say, on this day, we will no longer accept paper plans, and then exclude some developers or builders because they weren't prepared. So we've been working with them for some time to be able to get there.
Well, if we get down to just a couple, do we have the means to scan just those couple ourselves?
We, we do, we do have the ability to input those, but we, we don't want to get into that business. We're, we're gonna get to the point where we'll probably come back to this board and, and ask you to create a policy to mandate that, so we'll have some teeth in it.
You write us another policy.
I have a gift for that, apparently.
Move, move to consent.
So moved. Next.
All right, next item is strangely enough, an acceptable use policy.
Been busy.
Most government organizations have an acceptable use policy, which describes all the do's and don'ts that, that employees, are, are expected of employees for their use of technology equipment. One of the things that we haven't done here is, well, back up, we don't have an acceptable use policy. We have, we currently have two policies, one related to the use of the internet, another related to email, that were done several years ago. What we've done here is combined those, because obviously, technology is something that keeps. So we've consolidated those into one acceptable use policy and added sections, sections on software, the network, hardware and software. Down the road, we're also gonna have to address PCI DSS, our credit card uses, and physical security as well, because that's, that's one of the areas or vector of attack that we need to make sure we're protecting ourselves from. So really, this is a, the acceptable use policy is a catch-all. And when I say it's an industry standard, or most governments are using it, anytime that I get a survey from risk management or, or have to, to answer questionnaires about what we do, everybody asks, does the county have an acceptable use policy? So what I'm attempting to do here, my, with best practices, staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
So moved. Next.
Next item is a trade, IBM Trade-In Program Agreement for a hardware purchase. Last year, the Commission approved the purchase of an IBM V7000 storage device. It was rather expensive, but it was replacing an obsolete, an older piece of equipment. What IBM likes to do is offer this buyback program, and they want to offer us sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars to take this off of our hands. What they'll do is refurbish it and sell it to someone else. For our intents and purposes, the cost of maintaining that, that device here, a thousand dollars a year. So we want to go with that, let IBM have it back.
Yeah.
So moved. Next.
Last item is the assignment of private road names in the Brandon Wild retirement community. Brandon Wild's been there for over twenty-five years, and in that time, obviously, they have fire rescue calls, sheriff's office calls, things like that. And historically, they haven't had any road names there. Whoever looked at that from the air, or been in there and driven around, it's road name. So I have to give credit to the GIS department in being persistent, and we had a turnover in ownership recently. GIS reached out to them, and ownership said, well, that'd be great, let's get some road names. So GIS worked with them, developed the road names that are in your agenda item there. On approval, those names, have road names put out there, as a public safety response.
And the mailing addresses for these residents will still be the same?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just new for?
Right, it'll make it easier to find things in the complex itself, but the, the actual address will not.
And who pays for the signs?
These are private road names, so it would, it would be them. Did we?
The first sign.
First sign we do?
How did we come up with leaky lane?
I'm gonna have to defer that to GIS. They're not taking the bait. We'll say those.
No leaking, no rain.
Uh, move to consent.
So moved. Mr. Blanchard, do you have anything else for us today?
Oh, ma'am, that's enough.
Mr. Blanchard, I'd like to thank you for the information I asked, I believe it was last month, on cost we were spending, storage and so forth. And I'll thank you for sending that out to me.
Quite welcome.
It's a number, though.
We have any other committee items? Right, legal matters, Mr. Driver, do we have anything today? Staff reports.
First item you have is your personnel savings for fiscal year so far. You see those savings have grown to seven hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, obviously exceeding our, our budget goal.
Very good. Internal services?
The first item is the year-to-date budget report for your review. This is for the month ended February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty. We should be operating around sixty-seven percent of our budget, and everyone is operating accordingly.
Thank you. FOST?
Yes, the next report is the FOST update. We have received funding through the month of January. That check was approximately one million eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. We are currently collecting at a rate of nine point four-four percent.
Investment report?
Yes, the investment report is just for your review.
Ms. Richardson, do you have any questions on these reports?
Oh, ma'am, I do not.
Having no questions, we will accept those as information. Do you have any other comments? Does the public have any comments for us today? Being none and no executive session items, I am adjourning this meeting. We'll come back in five minutes for the final committee meeting today. Thank you.
I don't know that we need to wait five minutes unless you need a break. We can, we've got budget hearings at ten, so.
Moving on, oh. Okay.
There you go.
There we go, we on now. So I'd like to call to order the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee for March tenth. Already having the invocation and pledge, we'll move right down to the approval of the previous meeting minutes.
Motion to approve those minutes.
Who? Mr. Johnson, we good with the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, agenda set.
Okay, all right, we'll go, no presentation, no consent, we'll go right into debate. Are you ready?
Don't present from there, Mr. Clayton.
My great pleasure, you do. First item I have for your concern. We've been on the front. At when we don't, things we have found, electrical.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear me? Hello, hello, oh, okay. Now we're looking at our water treatment plant. I have for your proposal from them to look at the rewiring of our high-service pump number two out at the Blanchard plant, total rewiring of our Clark's Hill water treatment. Go in and replace some of the main feed wires as well as guarding equipment, for which are thirty years old and you can't find parts for it. So take this recommendation at five percent of total cost we estimate, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, recommended.
Hey, I, I know when you and I went around, we looked at a lot of this electrical boxes and so forth, and they were, they were, time for some updates, so.
Motion to consent.
So moved.
Second item I have for you is by our slug. State requires that we hire a third party to go in, monitor those, prepare an annual report, have a proposal before you at the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. Budgeted by annual operating budget. I don't think they've raised it twice anymore. Recommend.
Motion to consent.
So move.
We have another engineering proposal for you. May or may not know on Valentine's Day, All-Star Engineering. Esters. Two days, uh, was IRO, our responsible officer for filing certain environmental documents. Right now, we don't have anybody that's really qualified to do that, or has been, our department.
Motion to consent.
How are we addressing that? Are we seeking someone for that position, or?
You have an executive session item we're gonna talk about.
That's, okay.
Mr. Clayton's all over that.
Okay.
Multitiered approach.
So moved, thank you.
February twenty-seventh, Columbia Henry, it was Burke Mountains Booster Pump Station. It was submitted by RD Brown Contractors out of North West End, one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Out of one million, thousand.
Forgive my ignorance, where is Burke's Mountain Booster?
Right before you. Our station. If, if.
Over a bridge, it kind of looped.
Right there.
There's a loop all the way around.
Running sixty-five on one oh four.
Missed it. I missed it, that's what happened, Billy. I'm sorry. Motion to consent.
So move.
February twenty-seventh. It's for the wood. Only one bid submitted. Dublin, down to one million eight hundred thousand two hundred and five dollars. Budgeted for this. I've been, I've been for a little. Tried to read. Looking to do this. I was here. I'm on the edge of the world. areas to this. Our pizza. Gonna have to go back in there and drive pylons, that site, and we won't. Pop over there. Probably gonna be looking at. I won't have one. Recommend.
I know I don't need to ask this question, but how do you handle the operation of the station while you're doing that? Is it secondary or online, or you hook some of those pumps that?
Right next to it.
Nobody else would bid on this? I also look.
I got a little.
No, we don't.
I got a little scared.
You bid over budget.
Of course, I set that budget through you. Now we're in the prime mode.
How we pay for the extra six hundred?
When you rent, you can do things like that.
Oh, ma'am, we have enough money in exchange.
Okay. Motion to consent.
Second. Move.
So in our budget this year, we had money for the, our building B campus, and we have votes for the roof. RPI out of Groftown. Check them out, and they were recommended. Staff. Down of ninety-three thousand nine hundred dollars we had.
RPI is definitely a reputable roofing company, so. Stay in your lane. You worry about my water. All right, motion to consent.
Second.
One of these little projects that have time developing is a lay-down yard. Off of Williams, right behind the state patrol. Lay down a lot of our equipment. Out looking to thrive storage. An engineering. A two, here that set of plants, down of thirty-two. A two, here that set of plants, kind of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and six.
So that's for the design, but your total project budget is two oh seven?
That's what we still... Already been approved.
Motion to consent?
Second.
By force. Cause of weather, material, and rock delay. Tiny days.
Motion to consent?
Second. So move.
Other change order in that same vein, Blair Construction Company, who is in Crawford Creek Trunk. And rock delay board. March fifth.
Motion to consent?
So move.
Now, when they brought me these truck bids, started explaining to me all what had happened here. Lays and out on... Turned my glasses sideways and said, "Dude..." Actually... Right into a bug. Radiator. Now it's starting to glaze out on them. Don't want any more. They had to come up.
Nick, can you just give us a short version? Come up here, a short, the short version.
Got a price for the, uh, in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars, and we're gonna...
We ran into an issue with these vehicles. Uh, we initially brought them to commission. Everything was approved. POs were issued. We started getting delivery of some vehicles. Got a phone call from the dealer who won the, uh, who provided the low price. I think it was bid. It may have been on time. That they ran out of radiators, not building our trucks. But we tried to get them to hold the pricing, but Ford had a redesign that model year. They would not honor the price. They wouldn't hold the purchase order. They wouldn't allow us to do anything. So we just kind of had to restart the process. Out and determined that this was about the best way we knew to go buy these trucks and move forward.
Got to read.
Short version. There you go. Clayton, you're expensive. You get a new truck every time we're up here.
But I don't.
You still have your F-150, don't you, Mr. Clayton?
Same one.
Tires roll.
Motion to consent?
Second.
I'm not the only one. One more?
That's from one of our... I sure read.
And he one-hundred percent understands that we gotta go in there. He loses his sense. Got it. I don't think the copy in my packet is executed first. I guess it wouldn't be, except wait first. Motion to consent?
So move. All right, I get...
Yes, sir. I'll I'll start from here. First one I have for is an amendment to the traffic engineering advancement ladder. Commission has previously approved this ladder. However, we did not, uh, uh, explain the pay difference. Uh, we just basically bumped it to the next level. Time constraints, there's issues, there's there's situations where our folks are here and get cost of living increases. And when they get their certifications, they're right there where they are to get, they're not getting rewarded for it. This adds a five percent bump in pay raise, or the newly acquired, let interval for the newly acquired grade, whichever is greater. Staff recommends approval.
So move.
Next I have for you is a green infrastructure and low-impact development program. Since we are in MS four permuti from EPD, we are required to have a green infrastructure and low-impact development program. This has to be in effect by December of this year for new requirements put on development by EPD. Uh, we have basically used the North Georgia Planning District Plan and the, um, Stormwater, Georgia Stormwater Management Manual to come up with this plan. Ms. Katie Beth and Mr. Eastman have put this program together, I believe. Um, it does kind of give descriptions on what has to be done. It also gives ways of getting out of the requirement if it's not possible. Uh, if you look at our soil map, we have tons of different types of soils. Pretty good program, but basically says that first inch of rain that falls on your land, you must detain. If you can't detain it, you have to show us why. Program that you basically follow. That's the nutshell of it. If you have questions, we can get Ms. Beth up here.
Well, this is, to be perfectly honest, I did not read this. It was very, very lengthy and whatever. But what what effect will this have on the development community moving forward? Is it, is it something that they're gonna say that we're putting on them? Or is it something that they're gonna realize that it's coming down if we want to be, uh...
We'll have to make sure that we explain to them that it's a it's a pass-through regulation. We're required to come up with this program because of our permit that we have with the state. We'll have to educate them on that. As far as what we'll have to do, they're going to work on their pond. They have bioswells, rain gardens. There's a whole, whole bunch of stuff that you can do. Impervious, I'm sorry, pervious paving. Lot of different options they have to look at. They have to make their their best decision, their business decision. Uh, but if they can't make it happen, they can come in and sit down with us and use this program, show us why they can't make it happen. If if we agree with them, they don't have to do it. That pretty much it in a nutshell.
Can you come forward so she, please can hear you?
Um, it applies for all MS four, state of Georgia, which is the majority jurisdictions. And we're a phase two, so our program goes into effect in December. All phase one mediums going to affect in April, so Augusta is going to come into effect before us and then some after us. So, by and large, it'll affect all larger governments. But we are gonna hold some training sessions in addition to low-impact development. Just educational seminar to help bring Columbia County developers online.
But the cost could be substantial. Is them meeting these requirements, or is that, uh, we don't know?
We don't know. Um, I mean, there's been studies proving that it is cost-effective. Uh, but, you know, I guess it really just depends on your site. If you have bedrock or something like that, that would make it not, it would make it unfeasible. It's written into our program for that aspect. We did not write a cost-only feasibility out of it, but we took many site locations into consideration. So, I guess we will see. But overall, this should help with just stormwater management, so it's not as much as going to the streams every single rain event. Or we'll stay onsite and infiltrate.
Basically recharge groundwater, put it back into the earth and settle it in order across the top of it.
Hey, when you said, um, the first inch, is that the first inch per day, per week, per project?
Per storm.
Per storm, per event, okay. Um, and I'm glad you're talking about having a formal education, you know, seminar type thing with it. Well, I did not read the whole thing either. It was quite lengthy. Um, I saw a lot of the items that weren't necessarily asking the developers to do a lot more, but maybe document what they are doing. Is that a fair assessment?
They have to, they do have to document. They have to, they have to show us they're meeting their requirements. They can't meet them. They have to show us why they can't meet them. Come in here and say it's too expensive. If they, around the quarry, it's bedrock. You can't recharge groundwater when you're building on top of rock. We understand that. Infiltration rate in the soils is is just not there. You can't get the water to go into the soils. We understand that. They have to show us they can't.
Have to prove it.
They've, they've always had to do a lot of hydrology studies before they develop it. So this is just another aspect for consideration, that process.
Do you think that, um, what is the monetary impact for some of these developers and site guys? Is it gonna, are, are we gonna get calls going, "Oh, y'all are mean and terrible"?
It's hard to say. If you build on a very sandy site, it's gonna be next to nothing to you, because your infiltration rate's gonna be very high. Your pond is basically gonna be your infiltration site. If you're on a, on bedrock, where you're not gonna have to do it, so there's no cost implications. You're in the middle, it's it's tough to say.
They can get as creative as they want to with it. You know, if they're able to install bio-retentions throughout the site, they can make a smaller pond, then they have more usable land. Bio-retentions, they can essentially be like a landscape island. So it's, I mean, it's just really looking at all options and...
When you explain it, it sounds easy. When Joe Home Builder calls me and complains, it's gonna be, "Oh, Katie Beth".
Good example of one that the county did is Gateway Boulevard. Once you pass Walmart, go down the hill to the Exhibition Center, that island is a bio-retention. It's made to filter the water before it, now it doesn't retain the water, but it 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 filters the water, which is another key point of it. Um, so we've done it ourselves.
So we will have training sessions and we'll invite all the homeowners or home builders, developers, contractors, everybody.
Good. Thank you. Um, motion to consent?
Uh, so move.
Next one I have for you is a pipelining project that we've discovered a sinkhole. We've made that repair, but we realized we gotta repair the rest of the pipe while we're out there. We got a quote in the amount of seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The staff has recommended approval. Lot cheaper than digging the road up.
Okay.
So move.
Next I have for you is the Engineering Department Advancement Career Ladder. I have worked with the engineering staff to come up with an advancement ladder for their inspectors, their engineering inspectors on site. It does require classwork, requires a lot of time to be spent on the job. We'll have to go through testing. They'll have to get certifications. Basically lays out a way these folks can be, can become, uh, higher grade levels in their department. Does require a lot of, a lot of learning, which is a benefit to the county as well. Staff has recommended approval of this career ladder. Have the money in the budget for it. It's already in the current budget, and we're asking for it again.
And we will pay for the training?
We, we do pay for the training, yes, ma'am.
So this would go right on end, soon as approval. So move.
Next I have for you is a traffic signal application for a preemption traffic signal. This will be in front of the fire station on Furious Ferry Road. This is just the emergency light to get fire trucks into the road. Be part of the State Route twenty-eight widening project. Chairman to authorize, Chairman's author, authorization for the chairman to sign this application.
So would this affect if we future light there or it...
I don't see them ever being a few, a light at the fire station.
Right, but...
But we're working hard on Blackstone Camp.
That's what I was, that's what I was talking about. These wouldn't...
But not conflict.
Motion to consent?
So move.
Next I have for you is acceptance improvements for River Oaks Phase One B in Calari, Section Six. Staff has recommended acceptance of the improvements for both of these. Final plat as-built and warranty deed, two-year warranty period beginning the date of written acceptance of the as-built drawing.
Motion to consent?
So move. All right. Mr. Driver? Nothing today. Thank you, sir. Staff reports, uh...
Year-to-date budget report for water utility, their construction project update that you'll see there. Anything in red is that's had motion in the last thirty days. Just information.
That was just information. I do have one question. I'm sorry I ask something on this every time, but the, uh, environmental testing, six forty-two, that's the highest that's it last year.
Oh, some of the tests that they did.
Okay. Right. Sounds good. Thank you. Uh, any public comments? Public? Uh, I think we have an executive session item, so...
Just move it to the full board.
Yeah, let, yeah, let's, let's transfer that to the full board. Motion to...
So move. All right. With all of that, uh, I'd like to adjourn at nine fifty-four.